We'll call the meeting to order. And I did forget to mention beforehand, if you're gonna come up to the podium to speak today, could you please put your name and address, phone number up on the sheet? Right there on that little desk by Erin. Okay? It's just for the minutes, so that we know who's here. So the meeting is called to order. Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. And Councilman Smith, I think you're gonna give us an update, please.
Commissioners?
Hello?
Jim Smith, East Bethel City Council. We don't have a lot going, but October twenty eighth, our meeting, we did the variance for Fillmore Street. We approved that. And the variance for, on two hundred thirty ninth, we also approved that one. Last night, we had a closed session on the three sixty review on the city administrator. So then the results, that'll be at our next council meeting. That's basically all I got.
Okay.
So happy Thanksgiving to all of you guys.
And to you.
Thank you.
Alright, the next thing is the approval of minutes. Does anyone have any changes, comments?
I have one. You guys don't have to catch it. It's under the members present. Somehow Corey Jorgensen became the vice chair.
I saw that.
Nice.
Congratulations.
Maybe, maybe next year.
Foreshadowing.
Maybe next year.
Okay, so we'll make that correction then?
Yeah.
Nothing else? Okay, then is there a motion to approve the minutes as corrected?
So. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, a second? And all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? And opposed?
Staying.
Okay, thank you.
Was not here.
And that passes. And then we're gonna talk about the Planning Commission reappointment recommendations.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission. Before we get going, the next Planning Commission meeting will be December seventeenth, seven P M. I need at least four of you here, so if you can make sure that that's gonna work, put it in your calendar now. We'll have a public hearing notice on cannabis ordinance where we need to hold a public hearing.
What time did you say?
Seven P M, our regular time, December seventeenth.
And I will definitely not be here.
Okay. I will. Alright, um, let's see. Planning Commission reappointments, consider recommendation to reappoint Sharon Johnson and Brian Downey to the Planning Commission. Sharon Johnson has served on the Planning, the East Bethel Planning Commission multiple terms. Her most recent appointment started January of twenty twenty-two, and her current appointment expires January thirty first of twenty twenty-five. Commissioner Johnson has submitted a letter of interest seeking another term, which would expire on January thirty first of twenty twenty-eight. Brian Downey was appointed to serve a partial term on the East Bethel Planning Commission, which began on February twenty-seventh of twenty twenty-four and is scheduled to expire January thirty first, twenty twenty-five. Commissioner Downey has submitted a letter of interest seeking to serve another term that would expire January thirty first of twenty twenty-eight. Planning Commission is requested to consider the approval of a recommendation to the city council to reappoint Sharon Johnson and Brian Downey to the Planning Commission for an additional term to commence February first, twenty twenty-five and expire January thirty first, twenty twenty-eight.
Thank you. Alrighty, so I'm not sure how this all goes, but um.
Make it easy. You guys have already told yourselves that you're gonna come back for punishment. I'll make a motion to pass on a recommendation for approval for Sharon and Brian to be reappointed to the commission should council have it be their will.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Can either of you second? Because this is your reappointment. Could you second your own?
We could, yeah.
Either way, I'll second.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just curious.
Thank you. Alright, um, any discussion?
Last chance to get out.
If not, we'll take a vote. Um, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
And opposed? And that passes.
Uh, Commissioner, we do have one more. Gabe Hanchin's term is scheduled to expire on the same cycle. He has requested a little bit of your time tonight.
If you'll notice, I have not sent a letter of interest to continue, um, more or less for the reasons that I am, I'm starting my own business.
Congratulations.
I've got several other commitments throughout the week that are weekly, you know, Monday night, Thursday night. And to continue to, even if it's, you know, one day out of the month, it, you know, I'm still taking time away from these other commitments, not to mention my family. I have enjoyed every ounce of this, surprisingly. I've, I've got such a, a laxadaisical attitude in general, but to come here and to be professional and to, you know, express the care for the citizens and the matters that come forward and just to experience this side of the podium and to be a part of this has really been an awesome experience. And for the time being, I'm gonna step away, and that doesn't mean it's indefinite, but I'm going to not renew my term.
Well, I wanna thank you. I feel like we're kind of buddies because we were appointed for this last point, um, last term at the same time. And I think both of us were pretty quiet at the beginning, weren't we? And I really appreciated your input.
Thank you.
Wish you luck. Hope to see you back.
I.
When you're ready.
I expect to. Might be a while, but I'll be back.
Yeah, thanks for serving.
Absolutely.
Thanks a lot, and good luck to your bachelor.
Yep, thank you.
So, so the city will advertise, probably after the Thanksgiving holiday, will seek applicants for, to fill the vacancy. Uh, and obviously, as we get applicants and have a deadline, we'll bring them in front for interviews like we've done in the past, and you all can make a recommendation on the vacancy. We will probably wait and bring both of the recommendations in front of the council for final approval. In case the council decides that they're not interested in one of the candidates who are seeking reapproval, then we would have multiple opportunities for interviews and appointments. So we'll kind of put things in order so that it makes sense, so.
So when will the deadline be for that then?
Hmm, probably not till after the first of the year. Uh, we would probably do interviews the January meeting. Uh, since the term does expire in January, and we would have.
Wouldn't be enough time for the December seventeenth?
Right.
After the question on the two.
Yep. So.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. That makes me sad.
I know. It's, it's not been easy to, you know, when Erin messaged me, it was like, ah, you know, I want to say yes, but it's like, you know, to say, you know, yes to this is saying no to some of the other things that I'm really, really being called to pursue right now. So there will be another time.
Yep.
For sure.
Good luck.
Okay, so we will keep on going. The next thing is gonna be our public hearings. There's a setback variance, and Erin is gonna talk about that one.
Yeah, thank you again, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission. On October third, twenty twenty-four, the city received an application from Sharper Homes Incorporated to reduce a standard setback from ten feet to eight feet in the front yard for the installation of a septic drain field and a setback reduction from the ordinary high water level of seventy-five feet to sixty-one point five feet for the construction of an attached patio cement slab at a new property located at thirty-five sixty-four Edmar Lane Northeast. This is a point six-four acre lot, which is in the Coon Lake zoning district, and is covered by a shoreline overlay zone. Not only does this lot have shoreline, but it also includes a section of wetlands. In addition, the land immediately adjacent to the, uh, to the east is city-owned and contains a lowland with an open drainage ditch that runs parallel to the lot line. These features create quite a list of setbacks that must be met. Sharper Homes Incorporated is proposing a slab-on-grade home with the placement that takes into consideration all the setbacks, however, to place a septic system and well on the property. An encroachment into the property line setback would be necessary. A setback reduction from the required ten feet to eight feet would be needed for the installation of a drain field in the front yard of this property. Setbacks for drain fields are established by city code, uh, which adopts Minnesota State statute. Under the Minnesota rules, um, it is noted that if there's an infringement on a property line, it must be made through an accepted local variance procedure. Section fifty-seven five has a list of definitions that include setback and structure. A setback is a minimum horizontal distance between a structure, sewage system, or other facility from an ordinary high water level, top of a bluff, road, highway, property line, or other facility. The definition is clear that a setback is between the ordinary high water level and a structure. In this case, a structure is defined as any building or, I'm gonna butcher the word, a pertinence, including decks. Exceptional, exceptions are aerial or underground utility lines, such as sewer, electric, telephone, telegraph, gas lines, telegraph. That's interesting.
That needs to expire.
Towers, poles, or other supporting facilities. This definition, definition is clear as to what is and what is not a structure. And a pertinence, which is also not defined in East Bethel City Code, has a general definition as an accessory to or permanent, or and permanent, excuse me. Section fifty-seven requires a seventy-five foot setback from an ordinary high water level. The proposed house placement has the back wall of the house at or near the setback line. The proposed structure also includes a fourteen by twenty-foot concrete patio slab, which is attached to the back of the house protruding towards the lake into the ordinary high water level setback. Sharper Homes Incorporated is requesting the reduction of the seventy-five foot setback to sixty-one point five feet. It is the opinion of city staff that the proposed concrete patio slab attached to the house is an a pertinence. To hear requests from, for variances from the literal provisions of the ordinance in instances where their strict enforcement would cause practical difficulties because of the circumstances unique to the individual property under consideration, and to grant such variances only when it is demonstrated that such actions will be in keeping with the spirit or the intent of the ordinances. Economic considerations alone do not constitute a practical difficulty. A consideration of a variance requires the following three-factor test. The first factor is a test of reasonableness, which means that the landowner would likely use the property in a way practical, but cannot do so under the rules of the ordinance. In this case, septic systems are required for homes to be considered habitable. The approval of this variance would allow this property to be used as a new residence. The second factor is a test of uniqueness. The issue for the variances due to circumstances unique to the property and not caused by the landowner. The uniqueness generally relates to physical characteristics of a particular piece of property. In this current, in this case, current setback requirements for sewage treatment systems are fifty feet from an ordinary high water level, fifty feet from any well, twenty feet from any structure, and ten feet from any property line. Tanks are required to be placed ten feet from any structure and ten feet from any property line. The adjacent property contains wetlands and a ditch, which require a twenty-five foot setback. Shoreland setback for structures are seventy-five feet from the ordinary high water level, twenty-five feet from any front lot line, and seven feet from any sidelines. The third factor is that this variance would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. This factor is used to consider whether the resulting structure or improvement would be out of scale, out of place, or otherwise inconsistent with the surrounding area. In this case, there are nine other properties on Edmar Lane that have septic mounds in the front yard or side yards that are visible from the right of way. The adjacent property to the west also has a box mound in the side yard, which is visible from the right of way. A patio slab is not a minimum building requirement of a new single-family home in the East Bethel Building Code. This amenity is a personal preference to the landowner. The elevation of the ordinary high water level is nine oh four point eight feet above sea level, while the elevation of the proposed slab extension is nine oh nine point zero feet. This is over four feet of elevation drop over a seventy-five foot distance. The risk of damage by changing lake water levels, in this case, is minimal. For additional consideration, the shoreline overlay district permits property owners twenty-five percent impervious surface lot coverage. The total square footage of this proposed build, including the patio slab, is twenty-one percent. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission hold a public hearing and make a recommendation regarding the variance request for the reduction of the property line setback for the installation of a sewage treatment system and a reduction of the ordinary high water level setback for the construction of an attached cement patio slab at the property located at the new address of three five six four Edmar Lane Northeast.
Thank you. So we're gonna open the public hearing now, and usually I'd like anybody who is not the principal, um, from Sharper Homes. If anybody has anything that they'd like to say, please come up to the podium. And if not, do we have someone here from Sharper Homes? Okay, if you could please come up, um, if you have anything that you'd like to say to us.
Do you wanna open and close the public hearing?
I did open it.
Oh, okay. I didn't.
I did. Okay, thank you. So then we will close the public hearing, and we'll have some discussion.
Well, um, you know, it seems like there's an open space in a, of this lake community there. I, I'd see it, if, if being anything, it's gonna be a residential. And to do that, uh, these variances would have to be recommended for approval. In that, the lot, the lot next to it and eight other ones do have visible, um, what was it? Septic mounds. I think the septic, septic system should be, you know, I mean, considered, I mean, in order for it to be a residential lot, they obviously need to have a septic system. As far as the patio goes, um, you know, just looking at the drawing here and at the aerial view, uh, you know, it's, it's not in, it's not going past the twenty-five percent impervious surface. It's fourteen by twenty is not that big. It's, I guess I haven't really seen or heard much about, um, ordinary high water lines slipping or causing destruction to any residences here in the area. So I don't think that that's something that would be, you know, uh, something to consider heavily. I see reason to approve this variance, or to recommend the council to approve it, I should say.
Um, with the seventy-five foot, foot, um, setback from the, the water line, does the D N R have to get involved with that?
So the D N R was mailed a public hearing notice, uh, both electronically and a physical letter, and I've got zero response.
Is it possible that it comes later? You know, after the recommendation, let's say we did, um, recommend approval and the city council did approve it. Could it come back later?
My experience has been the D N R responds typically the day before the public hearing to ask questions if they have any question about what's being proposed, or if they wanna clarify some details. I've not had an experience where they've come back after the fact, uh, and made a recommendation. And we're not obligated to make sure that they give us a recommendation. We're only obligated to provide them a notice.
The septic system, system for me is not an issue at all. I do have an issue with the patio going back into that setback. I think we had a really similar one recently, didn't we? A few months ago, where they want, well, with a swimming pool.
Swimming pool.
Right?
Yeah, we had to have it pulled back in.
Yeah, I think we just, we denied that for very similar reason, that it was cutting into the, where the shoreline was gonna be.
If this was an impervious, like, like some sort of peat rock or something patio, would that change the need for a variance?
Yes, if it wasn't a permanent concrete patio slab or whatever that term is that I provided you. Then I would say that it wouldn't even be necessary to be talked about. However, if this is a permanent slab attached to the foundation of a structure that is in the ground, uh, I think it meets the definition.
Mm-hmm. Cause if, if you look at the, um, the aerial map, you know, there's a couple what looks like to the west. They've got, I don't know if that's, that doesn't look to be impervious.
Um, yeah, that's a possibility. That's also a possibility that those are existing non-conforming structures that came before an ordinance existed and, and have just a lot, been allowed to be maintained. I don't know specifically about those properties, but what I do know is what's on the book today, and this is a new application that has to meet today's standards. So the only way to get around it is to approve a variance to the standard.
Where will the well go?
Um, I was trying to find that earlier today on the drawing. It would have to be fifty feet from, uh, the septic mound, so I would probably look off somewhere in here, uh, maybe, is it Jesse? Maybe you can answer.
Yeah, it's gonna be in that vicinity where you got your person.
Somewhere in here.
Next to the garage, then?
Uh, yeah, side wall.
Side yard.
So it meets the setback from the property line and the building.
Three feet is required for a well.
From the sideline.
Yep. Yep.
And what are you thinking?
I don't think it changes the essential character of the neighborhood. It all sounds reasonable. If there's no way to make the septic work without going into there, then it's somewhat of a necessity. The concrete patio, I could go either way. I mean, you wanna go by the variance rules, it can't be something that's created by, created by the owner. They could choose not to have it, so therefore I could make an argument that not to approve the septic, but not the patio. At the end of the day, like I said, it's not changing the central character of the neighborhood, the high water line, you know, it's got a bit of a drop-off, so it's not a problem either. I could go either way on that.
If you'll notice, I didn't provide a resolution example for you because there are two issues here, and I don't know how you would, uh, feel on either one of them. So once you make a recommendation, I will generate a resolution most appropriate to what your recommendation is for the council consideration, actually on both of our items today.
So clear recommendations, Scott.
That's what I need.
Well, we could do a, a motion that, that has both of them in, couldn't we? Or two separate ones?
You can include it in one motion, but if it were your wishes to allow one var, for the variance for one item, but not the other, then that helps me draft a resolution as well, so.
I don't, I don't take issue with either request. You know, the setback decrease by two feet is necessary. And, you know, I don't see, I don't see anything harmful other than, you know, the fact that it encroaches in that seventy-five foot setback for the concrete patio. The house is two feet away from it, so either have a two-foot patio or something that's rock that you're gonna replace every, you know, three years or whatever, depending on what kind of use you're getting out of it. I'd imagine they're considering a fair amount of use on it, hence going with something more permanent. So I think, uh, I think it seems practical to me, their request, and it's just have to ask for the variance to make it happen, so.
Any other discussion? Any motions?
I would make a motion to pass it with both variances.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any more discussion? Okay. All in favor of the motion to recommend approval of both, um, aspects of that variance? Say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed? So that passes.
December ninth will be included in the city council, um, agenda for final approval.
Thank you.
For this next item, just a heads up, I, I plan, I plan to be part of discussion, but I will abstain from voting just as this is a relative.
Excellent. Okay, so Erin, if you could talk about the variance for the driveway and access standard.
To get, uh, an aerial here for you. Maybe if I can get my computer to work the way I wanted to today. Alright, thank you again, uh, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission. On October twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four, the city of East Bethel received a variance application from Josh Belfany, the property owner of one nine four oh eight East Front Boulevard Northeast for the construction of a second driveway or access off of his parcel to East Front Boulevard Northeast in a Coon Lake zoning district. Mr. Belfany and his brother, who owns one nine three five six, and not this brother, it's a different brother.
Brother all the same?
Acquired, acquired a vacant parcel from family, which was located be, between their two parcels. In a private land transaction, they divided the lot and adjoined, uh, each portion to their respective lots. Belfany subsequently applied for an accessory structure, which was permitted, and the project was complete. During the final inspection, Belfany was informed by a building inspector that he would need to obtain a permit for a second driveway. Belfany indicated on his September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three building application that there was no plans for a driveway. City code does not permit more than one driveway access in certain zoning, zoning districts of the city. Uh, section ten, general development regulations, subsection fifteen, driveway access standards, uh, access requirements, uh, subsection one, properties in the R one, R two, and Coon Lake districts are allowed one access point from the public street. In addition, all residential zoning districts driveways are, are on, located on improved streets require a batuminous or concrete driveway extending from the street, a minimum of seventy-five feet, or to the garage apron, whichever is less. This property, uh, the septic drain field is located on the north side of the house. The well is located on the, in the front yard, uh, forcing the placement of the detached accessory structure, uh, on the opposite side of the existing driveway. And therefore, he is unable to access the new building from the existing one access. In addition to the request for a second driveway, uh, Belfany is requesting a variance to the improvement requirements or the paving standards as required in section ten, sub fifteen, B two, under B three, which states that parking spaces for heavy equipment that would damage batuminous or concrete surfaces are exempt from the paving requirement. Belfany owns a skid steer, uh, and he intends on parking on the driveway and believes that its parking would be damaging to the paved surface. City ordinance, however, does not define what heavy equipment is. Excuse me. There are three parcels on East Front Boulevard Northeast that appear to have second driveways. A historical review of the G I S aerial, uh, aerials provide information that all three of those existed prior to two thousand eight, when the ordinance revision occurred, prohibiting second driveways in the Coon Lake R one and R two zoning districts. Staff advised Belfany that the second driveway access and pavement standard requirements would be denied if applied for, uh, and that a variance would be required uh, before either could be, uh, applied for or approved. Uh, to hear requests for variances from the literal provisions of the ordinance in instances where their strict enforcement would cause practical difficulties because of the circumstances unique to the individual property under consideration, and to grant such variances only when it is demonstrated that actions would be keeping with the spirit or the intent of the ordinance. Practical difficulties, as used in connection with the granting of a variance, means that the property owner proposes to use the property in a reasonable manner, not permitted by official control. The plight of the landowners due to circumstances unique to the property and not created by the landowner himself. And the variance, if granted, would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood or the locality. Economic considerations alone do not constitute a practical difficulty. The first factor is a test of reasonableness, which means that the landowner would likely use the property in a practical way, but cannot do so under the rules of the ordinance. It does not mean that the land could not be put to use in, in a reasonable way without the variance. In this case, I've provided, uh, an alternative to an approval and a denial. Uh, the property owner is requesting, uh, access for a second driveway uh, to a detached accessory structure is reasonable as adequate ingress and egress are necessary for the structure uh, to, intended to store vehicles and equipment. Or alternatively, the denial of the variance to place a second driveway on a property does not deny the landowner reasonable use of the property as detached accessory structures and subsequent access are not requirements or of development standards or of a primary residence by the East Bethel City Code. Second factor is that the landowner's problem is due to circumstances unique to the property and not caused by the landowner. The uniqueness generally relates to the physical characteristics of a piece of property. That is, to the land and not the personal characteristics or preferences of the landowner. In this case, the property is triangular shaped, limiting the buildable areas for construction. The septic system, it drain field is located on the north side of the lot. The well is located in the front yard. The layout of the home placed the attached garage and existing access driveway on the north side of the house. Away from the newly constructed detached accessory structure. The third factor is that the variance would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. This factor is used to consider whether the resulting structure would be out of scale, out of place, or otherwise inconsistent with surrounding areas. In this case, there are three parcels, uh, with existing non-conforming second driveways on East Front Boulevard. Or alternatively, properties in the R one, R two, and Coon Lake districts are not, are only allowed one access from the public street. In this case, it is the opinion of city staff that this variance request partially meets the standards under the practical difficulties test. For additional considerations, Belfany's lot is in a shoreline overlay district, which has a maximum allowable impervious surface. Coverage of twenty-five percent. Belfany's lot, based on acreage, would permit him to cover five thousand four hundred and forty-five square feet. The existing coverage on the lot, including the newly constructed detached accessory building, is four thousand three hundred and thirty-five square feet. Providing for an additional estimated one thousand one hundred and ten square feet of allowable coverage. Driveways are required to be a minimum of twelve feet wide, but cannot exceed twenty-four feet in width at the union of the right-of-way pavement. Based on the minimum paving length standards and a twelve-foot wide driveway. Would add an additional six hundred and fifty square feet. A twenty-four-foot wide driveway wouldn't add an additional thirteen hundred square feet. Which would exceed the impervious surface coverage allowed. Um, I did provide, uh, you the shoreline overlay district definitions of what impervious surface is. The lot area, the area of a lot above the ordinary high water level covered with buildings, including all. Appertainances, driveways, sidewalks, and, uh, similar impervious materials. For the purpose of this section, driveways that have a gravel base shall be considered impervious. Decks that allow drainage through the decking that do not have plastic weed barrier or some kind of material would impede drainage. Into the ground, and swimming pools do not constitute impervious surface. City staff is requesting that the planning commission hold a public hearing and make a recommendation to the city council for the placement of a second driveway. And to the driveway and access standards of paving as required by section ten, sub fifteen. On a parcel located at one nine four eight, four oh eight, East Front Boulevard Northeast.
Thank you. That was a lot of information.
Drink, Kathy burned it.
Okay, we're gonna open the public hearing on this, and Mister Belfany, would you like to come to the podium? To say anything? So if you could just state your name, please, and your address for the record.
Josh Belfany, one nine four zero eight, East Front Boulevard, East Bethel. Yeah, basically, as far as the second driveway goes, you know, there's three on this street. I think there's another two or three. Around the next street and in the same neighborhood, so. I feel like it's not really affecting the look of the neighborhood, um, and as far as, you know, not doing the. The, what you call it, hard surface or paving, um, yeah, running the Bobcat on there, it's ten thousand plus pounds. I feel like it's gonna crack concrete. It's gonna screw up tar that I do in the summer. It's just gonna. I feel like it's just gonna wreck a hard paved service, so. So I'd like to do some kinda millings or something like that, that I can, if it does kinda get, you know, beat up a little bit, I can always fix that, so. I guess that's about all I got.
Do you have a business that you use a Bobcat on?
So it kinda just stays there, but I have stuff I move around, stuff like that, but no, I don't use it for business reasons.
Can you just point there on the, on the screen where you're gonna be putting it?
The driveway?
The driveway?
Yep.
If approved.
Yeah, your, your driveway would be close right there.
I think I have that, uh.
Straight out from the garage, essentially.
I have a site plan that you provided.
As, as far as millings, do you mean like something like class five?
No, more like crushed tar.
Okay.
As far as like a millings or like a recycled asphalt, I guess maybe you call it.
Yep.
Makes it more pervious.
And yeah, would also make it pervious, and it would let it drain.
Sure, is class five technically have a gravel base?
Class five gravel would be considered impervious on the recycled asphalt millings. Different because they're not rolled, they're not rolled and packed down.
Okay.
That's part of the, the variance for, the variance request piece on it is that. Cause otherwise, if you put down the recycle, then you go back and hot roll it down and packs it down, then it's the true asphalt, but then you drive over that, it cracks. So the millings, the idea behind it, correct me if I'm wrong, is the millings even with the heavy equipment on it. If it was to shi- shift or separate, just go push it back in place, right? With said equipment.
Yeah, in fact, we.
As you're parking, just drag it again.
Right, yeah.
We put a very similar surface, um, on the farm this summer. Uh, with milling or recycled asphalt, I guess it is, and, uh, we do, we do drive the tractors on it, and it's, that's fine. Um, as whether it's impervious or not, I don't know, it's kinda sloped. Most of the water kinda drains off of it. Um, but I do have a question for you. Do you think it would be impervious if you had the, the, um, millings?
Yes. If you put a gravel base and you put in, in millings on top of it, and you drive over it, it's gonna compact over time and become impervious. In my opinion.
If it had a gravel base.
If it has a gravel base. I don't know if you're gonna pour asphalt millings down right on a sand or, um. Right over grass and compact those down enough to make an actual driveway, so I don't know what. The intent is for construction, and I'm not a, um, asphalt, uh, expert. I just know what the code says about the gravel base.
So what, what do you plan to?
Yeah, I didn't plan on putting gravel down. It's just basically sugar sand right now. So I just have it graded out, uh, to where I just put the millings right over the top of that. And I feel like if it did get driven over enough to where it was getting compact, millings or something, you can. Rework up to where you could turn it pervious again.
So is this something that's even considered a driveway? Like.
Uh, that was, that was kinda my. I wasn't sure whether I need to do that or not either.
Okay.
So, so our, um, code doesn't differentiate, differentiate between driveway or access?
Sure, okay.
So is this an, is this an access to the lot, a second access?
Yep.
It calls it a driveway access?
Okay. Another question, we did, um, something a few months ago about, um, a driveway. That was coming off of a county road that needed to have that seventy-five foot. Um, impervious concrete, you know, bituminous. Like, that doesn't apply here, cause it's not a county road, correct?
This, uh, this is the same application of the same ordinance, and I can tell you that the city council, excuse me. Um, approved the variance request, however, they included a condition that if the road. If the gravel, if the road base ends up on the asphalt. Hard surface of the right-of-way, causing issues. The condition could be put back on that it has to be paved.
For the apron or for the whole thing?
Just to the apron, yeah.
Which would be the whole thing here, yeah.
In this case, yeah, it's more than, it's more than seven, or less than seventy-five feet, so that would be the entire length of the.
So in here, we have case precedence as well.
Yep.
In a similar situation.
Yep.
However, not worried so much on the county road that's coming off and. That he'd be cleaning it up.
Yeah.
When you applied for the permit in twenty-three, or constructed it, and you said that you were gonna have a driveway, kinda what were you thinking at the time?
Well, then it was semi-grass dirt. It, it also was kind of the access point to the lot before we bought it. So, I guess my reasoning was, for one, I didn't know what I was gonna do there. I was probably just gonna drive on it, and then. Um, as construction kinda happened, it turned more to dirt, so I used the Bobcat to just drag it out flatter. Get rid of the ruts and stuff like that, and then upon final, um. Uh, basically the, the, what do you call it?
Final inspection.
Basically the final inspection, I had put boards there and did the yard up to it, so my yard wasn't still dirt around. And so it basically looked like I was putting a driveway in, which I kinda wasn't. I was just kinda creating where the yard was gonna come, if I was gonna put millings or something in. So, that's kinda where it all came about, so I'm like, well, if I gotta do all this, I might as well do what I have to do, and. I wasn't sure if I had to get a variance for a driveway, being I thought it was the access point already, so I kinda just put on the application. I don't know if I'm gonna do a driveway or not, so.
His, his, his lot is a combination, correct me if I'm wrong, it was two different lots for the first section, and then when. This one came up, then it was, you guys purchased it, and then that became the third lot tied into yours.
Honestly, I don't remember if it was two or if it was just one. I don't remember.
The one in between us? Wasn't it Bernstrom's?
Like mine?
Yeah, yeah, the original lot, was, was a couple of smaller lots from across the street combined to make a, make a lot. And then there was a third lot now added.
Yeah.
And that third lot. So what, what Aaron didn't say, although Josh to the north, Jeremy to the south. Our grandparents are on the Coon Lake side of it. This was their lot, and that act, that's, so if you go back to the aerial image. You'll see the, amidst, uh, the, the lot just to the south of it, the darker shaded spot is a, is a detached accessory structure.
Yep.
That was already on that lot before it was obviously combined and resplit between the two. So, at one point, there always was just access, and that was always the conversation of. Why would I need a driveway if we already have an access point on the lot, so, and now here we are.
It looks like you got the bigger portion of the split there.
Yeah, I, I did that so I could get up to the half acre.
Sure.
Nice enough to say, okay, we'll get to the half acre so I can build a certain size.
Okay.
How often do you think there'll be vehicles going across this access point then?
Um, I don't know. I haven't parked in the garage yet, so. I don't know. We do park trailer, my trailer there once in a while. I have a camper that I pull in and out. Um, I park the boat in there. So as far as everyday use. Maybe, I mean, if I get the driveway in there and start doing it that way, but.
That you'd be parking car in there?
Maybe just my truck, yeah. As far as coming in and out, once a day, twice a day.
Does anyone else have any questions for Mister Belfany?
Do you two get along?
Uh, we did use, we do now.
Tonight will decide. Thank you.
So, I'll close the public hearing now, and is there any discussion?
Uh, I guess I'm, if first responders need to make access to this accessory structure, um. But I'm, I'm looking at it, I think I'm. Underestimating that the scale of this, from the corner of that accessory structure to the road, what is that, fifty feet?
Fifty. Yep.
So, yeah, that's, that's really close. Um, yeah, then as far as the millions thing, I guess I'm new to that, uh, would that go all the way up to the right-of-way then?
I think so, yeah.
If the apron, it, it variances. Um, goes forward, um, that would just be. This, uh, access material all the way up to the right-of-way, then. It sounds like under conditional approval, it would be, need to be maintained, and if it wasn't, then, um. Steps could be taken to, to change that, but that's just what it is. It's just a pouring, uh.
Special dirt.
It's just ground up asphalt, so when they peel off the highway, the first couple inches to redo. The surface of the road that you drive on every day, they turn that ground up asphalt into something they can turn around and sell. That can spread out and leveled and driven over.
And then they ju- yeah, they just have a real heavy roller and, and roll it, so there's no, um, heat treatment, and you don't have to seal coat it.
Well, that, that's one way you can, that the way you're describing it. What he's, just to jump in here, what he is describing is. Putting it down and just not even compacting it. It's more just running it smooth with said, said skid steer. Take the bucket, make a nice flatter area, so that way it's not compacting, and then it does create that pervious.
Yeah, I, I would think that it would tend to break up. In fact, if you ever wanna come and look at it, you can at our place.
It, it compacts hard.
It does.
Just driving on it, it compacts hard. That's why it works out to be a wonderful base. So, I'm, are, are you done, Brian?
Yeah.
I'm all for the second access. I mean, he's got a great garage in and out. But I want pavement, at least at the roadway, like I've said, I've made my stance clear before. I think he deserves an access to driveway. But minimum twenty feet of impervious at the road, because the bottom line is. When you have a dirt, asphalt, grounds, anything. Tires track rocks into the road, rocks get picked up by tires, they get on the fifty mile an hour road, they get thrown and they break windshields. So I. I mean, drive through my neighborhood and look at the people who have dirt driveways. There's pebbles and rocks in the road from there. And so, I'm all for it, for the driveway, cause I think, you know, he needs it. And I don't have a problem with that, but the tracking happens with. Material that isn't impervious. And that's my two cents.
Any discussion over here?
Um, you know. I think about, again, that last driveway we talked about way back, right on Durant it was, you know, and we were. You know, in favor of it being the impervious, the concrete for the seventy-five feet, and that got overturned, you know? Um, with the condition of it causing any issue, which, you know, really, how do you track that? You know, who's, who's calling to say, hey, a rock flew up on my windshield and it was from this driveway? You know, so it's like the condition is just a wash, really, so. You know, yes, I, I, at the same time, though, you know, he's got what there now. You know, used to be. A driveway of some sort, a dirt driveway, and he's gonna be throwing, yes. Rocks on there with a skid loader that's gonna definitely move them. You know, it's, it's not gonna be, maybe it ends up in the road, it's gonna be when, you know, so what can we do to prevent that? You know, twenty feet of impervious, and then thirty of not, seems like. You know. It seems almost silly going half the way, but. Yeah, I'm not sure I'm entirely opposed to it. It's a slower road, you know? I don't know how far it is from. A county road or anything that is substantial in speed, that's.
Far, far enough away. Anything from there is not gonna track out to bike.
Right.
Viking, yeah. I was gonna say, is that, that's not a, a high-speed corner there, is it?
No, no, if anything, we, if anything, we ask, we, we do what we can to tell people to slow down in that area. I'm, I'm also in this neighborhood on the north end, but. You know, that's, that's always been a, it's a pretty blind corner.
Um, to answer the question on access, I mean, historically, all I can look back to is two thousand eight. Uh, I can take you through the history, the, just as a peace of mind, this is the new location here. Uh, this was the breakup of the lots, as we talked about before.
Yep, you can see the darker, darker color pulls to the greener grass around it.
I don't know if we would necessarily consider it an access, but.
Right.
You can see, oh, historically, over time, it's been increasingly used as, uh, an access. Until today. We also don't require, uh, accesses be paved to vacant lots. Um, only when a structure or a residence is built on it, we then require one year after that, if they're permitted in the zoning district, so. In the past, it wouldn't have even been granted an access. It would have just been probably driven off of the. Uh, ru- right-of-way onto the grass, onto the lot.
Does anyone wanna make a motion on this?
I do kinda wanna say too, you know, if we did say, you know, you have to do. I do kinda wanna say too, you know, if we did say, you know, you have to do concrete and as he's he's, as he's using it. Like he said he was tearing it up with, you know, a skid loader, I mean, eventually it's gonna, you know. Break up, you know, maybe at the corners or something, I I don't know exactly how much a, you know. Four-inch thick slab of concrete can withstand, but, you know, I don't doubt that it'll break up at some point. Right, you know, you know, a little a little more longevity or a lot more. I mean, I don't. I'm not heavily opposed to it, based on where it sits. You know, if it were back to the county road where, you know, right there where they're sitting. People are flying by at fifty-five, sixty miles an hour and it's an immediate hazard, I can see that. But I don't have a huge concern for this lot right here.
So it doesn't sound like there's a lot of opposition, if somebody would wanna make a motion, um, and maybe make a recommendation about the. The surface also in that.
That's mine.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval for the driveway.
And do you wanna include any recommendations about the surface? That it does not need to be paved? Or?
Meaning the hardwood.
Right, 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 uh, impervious or otherwise. I mean, it's still, you know. Up to Josh's discretion. You know.
So then the motion that hasn't been seconded yet is that you recommend approval. Of this variance um with the surface to be up to the discretion of the owner?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Corey, you're looking.
Oh, I'm just, like I say, I have different feeling about it and even like that other one, to me, it was more rural. You know, than this is, this is a residential neighborhood, drive down the street, there's driveways every, so, it's just my feelings. I've been around this type of construction a lot of years and. I I feel differently too about, if you build it right, the Bobcat's not gonna tear it up. I mean. I, how many businesses have blacktop in their yards, how many Bobcats are spun around? I couldn't tell you how many times I turned a Bobcat around on blacktop in my career. And so I I get it, I mean. But uh, that's just my feelings.
Okay.
For what it's worth, just in that same double-edged sword, then by your earlier comment as well, the heavy equipment would pack it down. Over time to prevent some of the issues you were describing as well, so kind of a best of all cases here, because if it does pack down and it needed to be. Re-brought up can be done, or if it is at that access point, it would also prevent.
I mean, I I went past the place, you know, it's a beautiful house, the dishes nice, you know, it. To me, that's where I'm like, I I would, if it was mine, I'd build a nice driveway to it, because. It to fit the rest of the house and to me, leaving it gravel or, you know, reclaim or whatever you wanna call it, regrind. It's it's not finishing it to me, so. All of those things and then, like I said, that's just the way I feel.
And I think a lot of that was to also help you create the pervious surface piece of it to have the space. To be able to have the access to get on and off, being at the corner there.
Yeah.
So that was the other reason, I believe he was saying for it.
Cause if if it was impervent, impervious, he'd be over his um lot.
No, he's got room, he's got eleven hundred uh square feet yet, I think his proposal's only a thousand square feet, so he's still got a hundred. Uh, extra square feet of room if it were impervious surface.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second that's open right now, any more discussion? Then I think we'll take a vote, so all in favor say aye. And opposed?
Aye. Abstain.
And that um passes with a a three to one aye to nay ratio.
December ninth.
All right.
City Council.
Thank you, gentlemen. And I think we have time to adjourn.
We should do adjourn.
Second?
Second.
The motion.
Okay, great, thank you, uh, all in favor of adjourning, say aye. Aye, and opposed? That passes. Alrighty.